Getting bad out there. I think it just needs to stay bad while we're in here.
Yeah.
What?
Bad while we're in here.
I agree. I don't know them that well.
Right. I'm a great guy. Oh, they're sixteen?
I've been in in Riverdale maybe seven times and fifteen rooms.
Oh, yeah.
Just. It's not a place I hang.
Oh. I unloaded my donations.
We're doing an executive session tonight.
Fancy earbuds.
Good evening, everyone. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for your blessings for our city, for our citizens, for our friends and colleagues. And we ask for your continued love and guidance as we, this City Council, seek to make life better for all those who depend on us. Help our decisions to be those pleasing to you, for we pray in your name. Amen.
Let's not call to order our June third work session. I'd like to welcome Counselor Carlin and Counselor Estes back to the adult table, so. Nice to have you all back up here, so. This time, our consideration to approve the agenda. I do need to add an executive session for personnel and litigation.
I'd like to add something on council introduced items, please.
Yes. What's that?
You need me. It is about changing the date of the August work session.
Okay. Mr. Peppers?
And you should have received an email from Mr. Patton related to a new business item that was left off the agenda, which is for an application for enterprise zone agreement with the Mill on Edouard. I would I would propose to add that to new business as the first item, as everything else on there has a staff report, and that way they don't have to sit through the entire cycle of staff reports, but.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion.
We'll add that as item A to new business. Any further additions, revisions, council introduced items?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. At this point, we have guests and visitors. We are excited to have a presentation of the fiscal year 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from Rushton Certified Public Accountants, so. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having Rushton back to do your fiscal year 2020 audit. Very pleased to be standing in front of you this year, talking to you, seeing your faces, smiling faces, a little different than last year. You were smiling, but it was it was on a on a screen, computer screen, so happy to be back in person here speaking to you. Before I get started, I you should have, I think, Ms. Porter passed it passed it out for you. You should have a presentation. Of course, that's going to be on the screen as well. You should have a bound report, nice and pretty bound report, and then also a letter there. We'll spend the largest part of our time, unless y'all have specific questions, that we'll refer to the report, but most of our time will be on the presentation, and I need to run through that letter really quickly as well before I conclude. But before I get started on the presentation, I want to first thank you all, but also thank your staff, all the way from the top, all the way down to individual employees, all very helpful during the audit process. Any questions we had, any items we requested, were very, very helpful in providing and did so with a smile, so we're very appreciative of that. Your finance team always does a great job in getting us what's needed for the audit, so we're appreciative of that, and kudos to your to your team for that matter, for sure. All right. First first slide here. Let's talk a little bit about our independent auditor's report. So this year, a little different than than last year, maybe even the year prior, in that you'll actually find in our in in the your annual financial report, your comprehensive annual financial report, you'll find three different letters from us as the auditors. You'll find our independent auditor's report, which we'll talk about first, and there's two other letters we're going to talk about a little later on. Whereas typically, we only have two letters in there. This year, there is a third letter because the city expended more than $750,000 in federal funds, so we were required to do a single audit, so we have a third letter in there this year. But starting with the first one here, independent auditor's report, so that is where you'll find our audit opinion, and it's found on pages one and two of the of the bound report there. That letter spells out what are Canton's responsibilities. So as you all are aware, the financial statements we're talking about here, the comprehensive annual financial report, those are the responsibility of Canton's management. We, as your independent auditors, are required to opine upon those financials, to give an opinion as to whether those financials are materially misstated or not, and that could be whether due to fraud or error. So that is our our what you hire us for. We do follow government auditing standards during our audit process. Obviously, with the the city here being a city, we do follow government auditing standards. And I am pleased to present that for fiscal year 2020, we do have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Nothing came to our attention during the audit that would prohibit prohibit us from issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. I typically call your attention to, you know, we've got this 113-page bound report here with one or two numbers in it, one or two statements and schedules in this in this file here, but in this entire bound report, there are really just two statements in there that bring all activities of the city together in one, and that's your government-wide statements. They're found on pages 12 through 14. You've got the statement of net position, which is going to be similar to a balance sheet for a business enterprise, and your statement of activities, which is going to be like an income statement for a non-governmental entity. A few numbers from those statements. Looking here at your net position, net position being the equity of the city as a whole here, I do have a five-year history for you here, and net position here shown by three different categories. You've got net investment capital assets, that's going to be your land, buildings, equipment, infrastructure, less accumulated appreciation on those items, less any debt utilized to acquire those items. It's 127 million, five fourteen, eight eighty-nine. Restricted net position, this is going to be monies you're holding that were restricted by an outside source. Splosh would be a good example. Any splosh that's unspent at year end would be shown there and restricted, 7 million, 301, 182. The residual there, unrestricted net position, 27 million, 923, 137. Gets you to total net position, 162, 739, 208. You'll note there for the year, there was a 12 million, 42,271 dollar increase in net position for the city, and you note there typically if we have something that that's causing a change, whether we're down this year, up the last, we typically describe that. Pretty easy to describe that for Canton typically over the last few years. It's really been your changes in capital, capital-related charges, and then also your sales tax revenues. And one other thing is your water and sewer revenues, really, are what's your increases there led to, led led from, I guess, contributed to. All right. The general fund, you all spend a lot of time throughout the year looking at your general fund. Of course, the general fund is the chief operating fund of the city. And so I know a lot of your time is spent talking about the general fund and probably some of the splosh funds as well and your and your water and sewer fund. As far as your general fund revenues, they increased 1 million, 848, 617 for the year, about 12.4%. You'll see a few items there contributing to that increase, the largest being your intergovernmental revenues increased 1 million, 606, 261. That was largely due to the CARES Act coronavirus relief fund monies that you received. That was the largest contributor to your intergovernmental revenue increase there. You'll note a few other items that changed there. Property tax increased 773, 532. Insurance premium tax increased 133, 071. Building permit revenues were actually down some, 458, 459, and obviously with the COVID pandemic, municipal court fines and forfeitures were actually down as well, 418, 225, which we're seeing across the board with court not taking place. All right, on the expenditure side, the expenditures increased 1 million, 103, 774, about 7.4%. Few items leading to that increase, general government buildings and expenditures were up 193, 531, due largely to capital out capital asset purchases. Obviously, those capital asset purchases are not typically annual, so they can be up in one year, down in the next, so there were some capital outlay items there this year. Street expenditures increased 188, 279 due to personal services. Your fire expenditures increased 385, 022 due to the contract payments to others there. Planning and zoning expenditures increased 149, 016, also due to capital outlay. Your unassigned fund balance, oftentimes this is kind of utilized as a reserve, while not it's not set that this is a reserve, so to speak. A lot oftentimes in the industry, people use unassigned fund balance to kind of talk about what your reserve being. Oftentimes, it's also unrestricted fund balance, which is similar to unassigned, but we always use unassigned and kind of compare that to your annual expenditures. A lot of moving parts here, obviously, as we're talking about one category of fund balance, comparing that to the expenditures during that time. Obviously, your expenditures are not the same year after year, so it can cause some fluctuation. However, for fiscal year 20, you note there unassigned fund balance in the general fund, 6 million, 39,000, 664. That's about 37.8% of your expenditures, which on a on a 12-month, that would be about four and a half months. So GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends two to three months at a minimum for a healthy reserve there, so to speak, and that's they recommend two to three months of unrestricted, but there again, similar calculation. You're talking about four and a half months here, so a healthy fund balance in regard to the general fund of Canton. All right, a few graphical depictions here of a few things we just talked about there. So for revenues and expenditures here, you've got three years. You'll note the green line there at 16 million, 796, 724. Finding out, just showing, starting to show a little bit of my my looking at a computer screen every day with those numbers there. I can still see them, but they're they're not as clear as they would have been two or three years ago, I don't think, but. 16, 796, 224 is the green line there. That's your revenue number. 15, 991, 470 is going to be your expenditure item there, so you can see the kind of trend there as far as revenue expenditures are concerned. And here we have the fund balance, the blue line being total fund balance, 8 million, 415, 653, with the green line being that unassigned fund balance, which, as you can see there, is the largest part of your fund balance, 6 million, 39, 864. The difference there being non-spendable or restricted or assigned fund balance, largest part of that more than likely is going to be assignments and also non-spendable or any prepaid items, those sorts of things, required classification there. All right, your water and sewer fund, for 2020, operating revenues decreased 175, 987, or about 1%. As far as specific classifications there under operating revenues, water fees increased 369, 381. Sewer fees decreased 395, 314, and then miscellaneous items, miscellaneous operating items there decreased 150, 054. On the operating expense side, those decreased 86, 892, or about 1.2%. Contributing to that cause or to that decrease was a cost of sales and services decreased 132, 965, and depreciation expense actually increased 46,073. Interest expense, always kind of compare that year to year. Of course, this is your interest interest expense on long-term debt in the water and sewer fund. Fiscal year 20 was 208, 950 versus 210, 119 prior. Your unrestricted net position, so we talked about unassigned fund balance there, and the general fund in a in a water fund is full accrual-based accounting, it's a different type of fund, so it's it's the equity in that fund is called net position rather than fund balance. This is the unrestricted net position, and that is, I see it, I should say fiscal year 20, my apologies, 18 million, 967, 849 versus 17 million, 363, 890 for the prior year. All right, another comparison here, three years for you, operating revenues and expenses. You see there, the green line is your operating revenues, 15 million, 642, 560. That blue line at the very bottom there is your operating expenses, 7 million, 309, 346. And the other line, the darker shade of blue or purple there, is 8 million, 433, 214. That's your operating income, so that's the the difference between operating revenues and expenses. Obviously, there are other items. This is not bottom line. This is your operating income. There are other items that are below the line, like transfers in and out from one fund to the other, capital contributions, those sorts of things in those funds. All right, I mentioned earlier, we have three letters. Our second of three letters is our report on internal control, compliance, and other matters. Because we are performing this audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we do have to assess internal controls. However, you all have heard me speak before doing your audit the last couple of years, and you know that we are big on this anyway. We're very big on policies, procedures, processes. We feel like that's what you really get out of an audit. Is, you know, any any firm, or not any firm, but many firms can put the numbers on paper, but to really look at how you're doing things, to say, okay, we feel like you should do this differently, make suggestions, is really one thing our firm is big on. So I am pleased to present, we actually, this year, we only had one one material weakness there, and it was a really a required accounting deal there, not really as much as a process as as a required accounting finding, we'll call them, that had to do with adjust, making adjustment in the prior period, that had to do with property taxes and the accruals related to that, accruing back property taxes for a period, and had to do with some reports that were used to make those calculations. We had to go back and adjust the prior year because that was material, the amount was material, and we're adjusting the prior year by material amount, that has to be reported as a material weakness. So just wanted to explain that one to you. This is not your typical material weakness, not to completely downplay it, but this is not like some glaring hole in in controls that are in place. One thing I will call attention to, that your that your staff have done a great job over the past few years, and we've been working with them over the last few years, talking about ways and and areas of improvement. If you if you recall, in the prior years, we've had a segregation of duties finding in here, that we did remove that this year. We felt like things were put in place so that, kudos to the to the staff in that regard, getting that one resolved. Which is what it's about. We make recommendations, they get implemented, or we discuss them. Sometimes our recommendation may not be possible or feasible based on number of staff, but but have done a good job of implementing things, so good job there in that regard. The third letter is related to the single audit. I mentioned earlier, because the city expended more than $750,000, we were required to perform a single audit, compliance on major federal programs. Pleased to present, we had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no material non-compliance related to compliance requirements applicable to those major programs, major federal programs. All right, my last two things here as far as presentation is concerned, I always try to keep you all informed of what's coming. Last year, I would have told you this one was coming down the pipe, may have been for the last couple of years, actually, and then what I'm about to tell you about is a future one that's been a future one for several years. This one, 84, GASB statement 84, and the next one I'm going to talk about, GASB statement 87, were both had earlier implementation effective dates, but they were both postponed due to COVID, so they they postponed about 10 different standards, two of which were 18 months and the rest were 12 months. And so 87 got pushed out 18 months, which we'll talk about in a moment, but 84 was required to be implemented this year. And basically, 84 has a lot of effect on governments, but but the effect it had on the city of Canton was really only related to your municipal court agency fund, or that's what it was previously called. One of the things it did was change those. Those are no longer called agency funds. They're now called custodial funds. They are still fiduciary in nature, and they are still reported as a fiduciary activity. But it did require some additional statements for those for those funds, and a little bit different accounting for those funds, but that that is the main effect 84 had was related to municipal court custodial fund, we'll call it now. 84 did have far-reaching other effects, but it dealt with component units and pensions and certain types of plans that while you have a pension, it doesn't affect your pension, so. GASB statement 87 is leases. Unless you're new to the realm here, you've probably heard me talk about leases before. I've I've presented on leases probably 10 times already in the last three or four years, and that's simply because it is a big standard. It's going to far-reaching, it'll affect pretty much any government. Matter of fact, it's really going to affect any entity because not only did GASB issue lease guidance, FASB also issued lease guidance, so pretty much leases are changing as far as accounting is concerned across the board with all entities. To quickly run through kind of what's changing here, currently, we account for leases as either a capital lease or an operating lease, with operating lease kind of being an income statement item where you've got revenues or expenditures. Capital lease, more more on the balance sheet, where you've got an asset and or liability involved here. This standard is going to now combine those into one approach for leases. Obviously, as with most accounting standards, it's going to go more towards the difficult side of things, closer to capital leases, less, you know, further away from operating leases. We will still have an asset booked, an intangible right-to-use asset with a lease liability, similar to what we do now for a capital lease. One one thing to kind of note there on that is the the current leases, many of the current capital leases are really finance purchases. They're not necessarily, they're not really leases from, they're called leases, but really, they're they're like a note. They're finance purchases. This would not apply to those. Those are still going to be on the balance sheet as they have been. The name may change a little on those because those wouldn't necessarily qualify as a lease anymore. Few things, we've been working on this for several years. I've had discussions with your finance folks on this. The main thing we've been saying thus far is this one's not required till 2022, but the main thing we've been saying thus far is to gather up all of your agreements, and I say agreements, I don't say leases, because what you call leases or what's called a lease may may apply here, but also things that are not called leases, agreements, contracts, may actually apply and really be leases, so it's important to pull all agreements together to make to see if they're going to need to be accounted for under this new lease guidance. So that's just kind of trying to be proactive to stay ahead of the curve on that because that one is going to be a big one. Any questions regarding the numbers? Like I mentioned, I do have a couple of quick things on the letter you got there I need to run through very quickly, but happy to answer any questions you have. All right, so you should have a letter there in front of you, and I always, I'm glad they changed this, so so I will say this letter is 90% boilerplate information. You've probably heard that from him before, so I'm going to move very quickly. You probably think he's talking fast already, but I I'm going to move very quickly through this mostly boilerplate information, but it is required communications to you all charged with governance. So this letter, you should see, says significant audit matters there. I make that statement because I always refer to people this letter, and it used to say significant audit findings, and I'd say it says significant audit findings, and everybody perks up and starts listening. I'm glad they changed that. It now says significant audit matters, which I'm very thankful for, because this is not where any significant audit findings are presented, even though that's what it said. All right, so quickly running through this, I'm required to let you know that the significant accounting policies for the city of Canton are found in the notes to the financial statements in Note 1. As far as items we feel are the most sensitive as far as estimates are concerned, by the way, you all are probably aware, most all financial statements do have estimates in them, so we feel like the most sensitive are life expectancies, capital assets for depreciation, and then allowance for doubtful accounts on your utility billing and property tax receivables. As I started this presentation out telling you that your staff were very helpful, everything went smoothly as far as getting the audit completed was concerned. I don't have any difficulties that were encountered in performing the audit. If I had those, I would report that to you in writing here. I also did not have any disagreements with management. I will let you know, while that would all be communicated in writing here, had I had difficulties performing the audit, or had I had any type of communicator disagreements with management, you would know long before now, before I'm standing here letting you know, so, but it would be in writing here. There are entries throughout the audit, adjustments sometimes, not as not too many for Canton, as you all have a pretty solid finance team in place that seems to get the adjustments, but there are from time to time audit adjustments or journal entries we make during the audit. There are also some adjustments we have that we feel are immaterial or trivial, that we pass on adjusting. However, we do accumulate those to make sure that in total, those are not, that are also immaterial in the aggregate to the financial statements. We we provide both the adjustments and the past adjustments to management for agreement and for posting, of course, to the general ledger. Management representations, this one's probably the most important thing in this letter, at least for for this year. As you know, we we ask a lot of questions. We request a lot of documentation during the audit process. We only can audit what we receive, whether that's an answer or a a piece of a piece of paper documentation or report. So this letter basically says that management or those staff we've asked have not basically withheld any information from us or intentionally given us anything that was wrong, that may change our opinion on the financial statements, and so we're required to have this letter. We do have this letter in our file. Not aware of any consultations with other independent accountants to attain any type of second opinion or anything like that. And then the remainder of this letter is is basically spelling out the required supplementary information that's in this report and where that's found and our procedures in in that regard. That concludes my presentation. Unless you all have specific questions.
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. Appreciate your great report. It's great to see the right numbers going up. And so I want to thank our team for their great work on the audit, and thank your team for your work, and thank our council for making the right decisions to make sure these numbers keep going in the right direction, so. Proud of the entire team and all their work, so thank you so much for the good report.
Thank you so much, and if you all are looking through this and have any further questions, by all means, reach out to us. I think I say it all the time, but we want to we want to be assist of assistance throughout the year, not just that necessary evil year end, so we're here to help, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
This time, before we get into the business section of our work session, we actually have three public hearings to conduct tonight. As typical, I'll have our city manager, Mr. Peppers, just review the kind of rules and process for our public hearings, so everyone who is attendance is aware of those, and we can follow those.
Sure. So we do have public hearings tonight. These require that you do sign up ahead of time and fill out a form that is required. The public hearings were advertised in legal organ. Notice to neighboring property owners under the development code via mail, and notice the public via large yellow public notice signs at the property. The mayor will introduce the case number. Those wishing to speak in favor of the applicant, including the applicant, will be given the first opportunity to speak. They have 10 minutes in total to speak. I will be the timekeeper. We'll keep up with that for you. Then the opposition will be given a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. We ask that that if you have duplicative comments, that you limit those so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And make sure you address your comments to the mayor and council. It is a public hearing, so it's not a time for the mayor and council to answer your questions. They will just hear what you have to say. Please be polite to each other, or I'll have you escorted from the building. It is a monologue, and I'm happy to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Sir, first public hearing is public hearing for cases MPA 2104-002 and CUP 2104-001 at the Mill on Edouard project. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is the public hearing for the cases you mentioned. The master plan amendment is an amendment to the original master plan City Council approved for the Mill on Edouard project in 2018. This amendment is in regards to the multiple family that was contained in the original letter of intent, in which it specified 250 units. They are, with this master plan amendment requesting that that number be increased to 280 units. This conditional use permit approval is a requirement of the Unified Development Code. In 2018, there was a companion conditional use permit application was submitted. The applicant in discussions with council in 2018 did withdraw that application. They are now back to move forward with the public hearing process. I'll be able to answer any questions any of you have towards the end of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. So at this time, we will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak in support of. and invite the applicant to speak in support of.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Benson Chambers. This is Kurt Alexander. Kurt is with the residential group, who is the applicant for the special use plan and also the master plan amendment. My hometown, Canton, Georgia, is my hometown. It has been for 63 of my years, all my years, and I've seen many changes. I remember when there were actually horses in the rock barn. Now it's a great destination spot. I remember when the mill, for 30, first 30 years of my life, was an active prosperous employment area. And then suddenly, one day without much warning, it ended. And then for the next 30 or so years, it was pretty much a dead, cold area. Very little happened. Downtown was similar, too. When I was young, it was very active. It was the place to shop. It was the place to come and do your banking. It was the place to come and do your business. Later, things changed. We got things like Walmart and Riverstone downtown slowed down. There were years, on a weekend, there was no traffic in downtown. And now I can proudly say I live in one of the finest, prettiest downtown areas, I think, in this state. I bet y'all agree with that also. When I first presented to you in 2018, the Mill on Cherokee, I had certain expectations. My expectations were this is going to be a destination for restaurants. It's going to be a destination for shops. It succeeded that. I came to realize the other day when the Kentucky Derby days was held down at the Mill on Cherokee that this is a destination for a community. And I think we should be proud of that. In 2018, when this was presented to you, the actual plan did have an area that showed residential multifamily. That area is very easy to recognize. Just walk down there and look at the Thomas Concrete Plant. That's where it's going. And because of the Thomas Concrete Plan and the fact that they had long-term leases, it's taken a while to get to this point. The residential group is proposing 280 units on this property, 3.5 acres, multifamily. Those will include one four-story building and one five-story building with a parking deck that will hold 396 units. 9% of those units are expected to be studio units, 59% one-bedroom units, and 32% two-bedroom units, ranging in rent from $1,200 to $2,400 a month. Mr. Alexander has some photos he'd like to show you. He may have to come around and get a little closer for you to see them. The first one is a rendering of what we believe these buildings will look like. And I think you'll see they very well complement the mill. He also has photos of some of their current clubhouse, which this one will have, and also, yeah, and also what the units look like on the inside. I think you'll find that these are very charming and will also be very accepted in the area. I certainly believe that the merchants at the Mill on Cherokee will find it very acceptable. I also believe the restaurants there will as well. But I also believe in downtown Canton, the restaurants will find it very acceptable as well as the merchants, as well as the downtown theater, as well as First Friday, that's tomorrow night, by the way, as well as the farmer's market, the festivals that we have. Did you know, when I was eight years old, we had a Fourth of July festival in downtown Canton, and we had Elvis Presley's gold-plated limousine to look at? We also once had a poultry queen. We think and hope that you will find this proposed amendment to the master plan not only acceptable, but needed as a residential unit to support and sustain the great things that we've come to love here in downtown Canton. We appreciate your opportunity to speak to you about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chambers. Lee, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? I don't think we had anyone signed up to speak in opposition. At this point, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council for discussion. Questions? Mr. McGrew?
I was trying to take notes as quickly as Mr. Chambers was talking, but I missed the rents for the separate units. Could you go over that again, please?
It's a 1,200 to 2,400 range.
In the letter of intent that was submitted, part of the package, it did specify $1,200 up to $2,400 on the rental price range.
Thank you. Is the rendering the final product?
The rendering?
There could be some changes. They will have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission for approval of the exteriors because this property is within the historic district. But those renderings would be similar to what ultimately would be the end product.
I see. With the unique development that we have at the Mill on the Etowah, I'd love to see something truly unique and spectacular in the elevation of the multifamily units. Something that would really be eye-popping and showcasing and people want to hurry and live there.
I do, and the renderings, as far as I can tell, like the two towers that are shown in the end really mirror the, like the tower in the, in the mill and the windows. So I see some similarities there, but I agree, it's a special development and we want to make it even more special, so.
Right. I like the nod to the towers, but looking for more.
Right.
Not antique things. I mean, modern things that young people want to come and enjoy and, you know, grab your interest right away.
Definitely. Mr. Patton, in the report, there was, I think, I believe, a recommendation from the Community Development Department about a possible update to the traffic study. Do you elaborate on that, please?
Development Services Manager has requested an updated traffic study be done prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit that would be submitted part of the construction plans for the site.
And a couple of factors of that. I know that this one was done, you know, we're sold in the midst of COVID, but it looks like this was done on a Thursday, February 11, 2021. That was only a traffic study from 7:00 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. So I believe the updated traffic study would be, you know, because we're sort of, we'd be out of COVID and then also, I think there have been, you know, many other businesses open at the mill, you know, in recent weeks, and I think more opening every day, so that could possibly impact it as well. So were there other reasons for the requesting the updated traffic study?
The Development Services Manager requested that part of the construction plans. See what additional changes might be warranted because of ongoing development in the area.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Where's the parking deck in relation to the apartment set the gentleman showed us?
It's in the center. Within the package sent out, there was an amended site plan. It showed walkways, if you will, from both of the buildings on the outer sides with the parking kind of being in the center.
Those schematics are hard for me to read, thank you.
Mr. Tullman?
Mr. Patton, has there been discussion yet with the applicant about a potential carve-out of a certain percentage of units for workforce housing?
There has not been any discussion in regards to that. You know, based upon the information that was supplied with the housing study, that staff worked with the city manager, with council members on these rental ranges that are proposed, meet the 60% to 120%, if you will, rental levels of the HUD AMI.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. McGrew?
Mr. Patton, do you think that the applicant would have any interest in some public art out on the property?
I will certainly reach out to them and provide that information back to council before you make a decision.
Thank you.
Schmidt?
Did I miss a rendering of the parking deck? Like, what does the parking look like in relation to the, the apartments don't wrap the deck.
Not all the way around the deck. They're on the two sides of the deck with an open side of the deck towards the railroad and the other buildings that are part of the Mill on Etowah. We have not seen a rendering for that facade of what the parking structure would look like. We tend to think it's going to blend with the exterior of the proposed apartment buildings themselves and material colors.
And we did get from you this afternoon the letter from my engineer explaining the wastewater treatment capacity and the timeframe for that. It's been communicated to the applicant.
Basically, as everyone's aware, we're in the beginning stages of an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant, extremely limited capacity with wastewater treatment plant. Utilities engineer has requested revisit the sanitary sewer. They're looking at bringing 40 units a month online, beginning in February of 2023. Utility engineer would maybe request council consider pushing that back to March or April of 2023. And he did indicate in his letter that, you know, things could be revisited as the construction goes on and the timing for completion of the project, that sort of thing becomes clearer, if you will.
Okay. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Patton, two questions. The extra 30 units, would that be by adding stories to the buildings?
30 units on the two buildings probably would not, if you will, add an extra story. It probably would expand outward a little bit, but 30 units would not be one story on the four-story or the five-story building.
Okay. And for public record, what is the reason for asking for the increase in units?
They have not indicated what that is. I would tend to think that probably they need those extra units to make the numbers work for the pro forma.
Thank you.
I'll ask the applicant and get that information to the council, but I just tend to think that those additional 30 units is to satisfy the pro forma and lenders.
Thank you.
Carl?
Mr. Patton, there's a note in the letter of intent about developments in green features. Is there any way we can get a little bit more information about the sustainability and green features of the project and whether or not it meets any sort of, you know, recognized green standards that we've looked at in other projects?
I will reach out to the applicant and get that information.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Any further comments, questions?
I have. Will the rooftop be secured for activities and events?
The rendering shows a sloped roof and not a flat roof, so I'm not sure that it would be available for any activities. But if they do change and think towards a flat roof, we can certainly discuss that with them.
No more comments? I'd say the project will look much better than the concrete plan that's currently there, so. So, thank you, and we'll move on to the next case. Public hearing for case MP 2104-003 for Laurel Canyon Pod 3. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir. This is a master plan request for Pod 3 within Laurel Canyon. The current master plan approval for Pod 3 does specify residential detached units, up to 10 units. The applicant is requesting the master plan be amended to allow attached units. They are looking at, if you will, three two-unit buildings going on this site for a total of six units. These units would be similar to the two-unit models in Pod 9 the other side of the Laurel Canyon amenity center. I'm here to answer any questions at the end of the public hearing.
Thank you.
I will note, if you will, that Laurel Canyon Parkway is a city-maintained roadway. The applicant probably needs to address for the council members construction, traffic, parking of construction vehicles during construction so that Laurel Canyon Parkway is not impeded from traffic flow while that construction's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. At this point, we will open the public hearing. And is the applicant or others here to speak in support?
Mayor and council, for the record, my name is John Gaskin. I'm a vice president for Patrick Malloy Communities. We're, we've been the primary or the only builder in the Soleil component of Laurel Canyon. And we own most of everything outside the family, single-family portion that's not age-restricted in Laurel Canyon. Laurel Canyon is, oh, and I'm here, we're representing the owner, which is Ballantyne PMC Laurel LLP. That's just one of our entities that happens to own this particular pod. Laurel Canyon is one of those projects that you're all familiar with. It's been around from the planning until today, about a 20-year project. The project is in the process of wrapping up. As you know, half the community is age-restricted, and the last house, the last contract in all of that age-restricted, the Soleil community, was signed two weeks ago. So there's no longer any homes or inventory left in Soleil. It's completely built out. Outside the gate is what the area is referred to, which is the non-age-restricted component. Pod 3 is one of those parcels that's not age-restricted. Aside from Pod 3, we have one other 25 lot section. Aside from Pod Three, we have one other twenty-five lot section that's in Laurel Canyon that we have applied for a land and service permit, and once those twenty-five lots are developed and, for all intents and purposes, Laurel Canyon will be completed as far as we're concerned. There may be a few lots with the other builder who's in there, but that will pretty much wrap up all the single-family residential, both age-restricted and non-age-restricted like this Pod Three is. The particular pod is, I'm sure you've been by there, it does sit on the Parkway, it's been the last, we've held out on developing this pod because a couple of reasons, it's a very small parcel. Originally, in two thousand and three or four, when the zoning was originally set up or the planned development, it was set up for ten, what they referred to then, I think as golf villa type lots, and at that time, that was kind of ill-defined, but they were backed up to the lot, small units, but essentially a fifty-by-hundred-foot lot with a dedicated street. So, we, Pod Three has some constraints with the property. It's, was more difficult for us to develop all ten single-family detached lots and get the quality of product that we wanted to get on that parcel. So, we waited about a year and our, once all the age-restricted components were sold, we actually have a waiting list of people who wanted to get into Soleil or the age-restricted product, but we don't have any opportunities. And although this particular parcel is outside the age-restricted, we're finding that a lot of people who are in that age group are attracted to Laurel Canyon, and so we think that, given the fact that there's a waiting list for this type of product, that we will immediately sell out all six of these lots. They're all single fam, let me take what they, first of all, they are not rental, they're not a scaled-down version, it's not anything particularly cheaper. The only thing that cuts the cost a little bit is there is a common wall between, in each grouping of two, and I have a couple of illustrations if you want to see. And again, this is the same product that was built on the adjoining parcel, that sits on the other side of the amenity. The price points, I was handed as I came out today of the office, we're looking at starting at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so again, I stress the point that it's not an inexpensive or a way to get a rental unit or anything in, or cheaper within the community. We felt like dropping from ten units to six units, at that price point, it provides a area on the property, it fits the property topographically better, and it provides views out the front and the back. And I don't know if you've been up to that particular part of Laurel Canyon, but the higher up you get, the views are outstanding. Now, this pod is not, the views aren't quite as track, as expanded as they are at the top of the hill, but still facing south, some of these views are quite phenomenal, and that's what's been the selling point, aside from the overall quality of the development. Every unit is two-car garage. We have dormers, front porch that are covered. Here is, and I know you can't see this, but here's the actual product that has been built, and this one may be a little bit easier to see. But this is what each two-unit building will look like, so it's, again, it may be difficult to see, but it essentially came from, it was designed by architects to take the single-family detached product and just put a common wall. So for all intents and purposes, it's the same architectural style, the interior is the same, they're all twenty-eight hundred square feet heated, I'm sorry, twenty-eight hundred square feet total, I'm sorry, twenty-two hundred square feet total, and about eighteen hundred square feet of that is heated, the other part's a two-car garage. We, we've also set this up with a private drive, so that we don't have to do a dedicated street, and the reason for that is, it was only six units, dedicated street would eventually be transferred over to the city, which would be a responsibility that they would have to assume long-term. The way the private drive is set up, it looks just like every, any other type of streets, it will be poured concrete, we have on-site guest parking as well, in addition to the driveways that are long enough for cars, but again, we try to, our HOA and so forth tries to discourage parking in the driveway. The way the private drive will be handled, it's contract, every person who buys one of these will actually put money into an escrow account, it'll be set aside for repairs and improvements and so forth for that particular private drive, so in no case would this ever be a burden to the county, or, excuse me, the city, like the other dedicated streets in the community are. We, in terms of construction, it is, we were asked by Bethany Watson with, I believe she's in engineering or community development, anyway, so she's been the person we've been working with in terms of getting permits to develop that particular parcel, and she's had us improve the sidewalk in front of the pod, because I think the trees or whatever had caused, for whatever reason, decay or something over twenty years, so we repaired that a month ago. And then she also made us put a paved construction entrance into the site, it's supposed, normally you use gravel or some component there. So she's been very foresightful in trying to eliminate any sort of issues in terms of breaking up pavement, interfering with existing infrastructure and so forth. With only six units on there, there's only one small sewer line that's got to be run into the property. We have engineering plans for that. That's essentially about a two-to-three-day boring process, and then probably another week or two to put the sewer lines in, and the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer run side by side, so this is not a prolonged construction activity on the Parkway, it's something that, again, because the site's already been partially graded. There's some cleanup, set up the pad sites, and then put the utilities in. On the construction side, for our home building side, which at that point, we will, are a different division within our company, will take over responsibility, they'll come in, they actually build the units. So we talked about restriction, you know, restricted site, building duplexes, or cottages, rather, and so the construction people have decided, rather than building the units as they sell, in other words, building two units, and then as they sell, build two units, as they sell, build two, they're going to come in, and primarily because they do have a waiting list, I think they'll sell all six units at once. So the point being is that all the construction will be compressed with the one set period of time, it won't be drug out over. So, and again, if any issues come up, Bethany's always been, in terms of access or interfering with anything on the Parkway, Bethany's always called us right away, or if any of the residents complain. So, I think because of how quickly and how small of a construction project this is, and because there's so much scrutiny on that Parkway, and rightfully so, because it serves everybody in the community, I think we certainly can overcome that. That's all I have, unless there's any particular questions.
Thank you. Again, I don't think we had anyone left signed up to speak in opposition, so we'll close the public hearing at this time, and open up the council for discussion and questions.
Can we see those pictures for a minute and pass them around?
Passing around, any other, any questions for Mr. Patton while we're passing those around? Mr. Patton, regarding the construction equipment on the Parkway, if council decided to approve this, could there be a condition stating that, or would that be necessary?
You can always place a condition that all construction vehicles shall be parked outside of Laurel Canyon Parkway, parked on-site. With them building all six units, three buildings at one time, the biggest thing is probably going to be materials, delivery trucks, they'll probably have one framing crew that will work there, and then the electricians, plumbers, that sort of thing, and it'll be a compressed timeframe, but council could certainly put a condition that all of construction vehicles, construction worker vehicles shall be located outside of Laurel Canyon Parkway right-of-way.
Mr. Carl?
Mr. Patton, what would be the recourse if we added that conditional use and then started receiving complaints that it wasn't being followed? What would be the recourse from the city?
Code enforcement, as well as Canton PD could go out and have vehicles removed out of the right-of-way issue citations, and then go visit magistrate judge.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
We can also wish to stop work orders as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Is this project, when finished, will it be overseen by an HOA?
I believe that this probably is going to fall underneath the Laurel Canyon Homeowners' Association, because it is outside of the gate in Soleil, there are two homeowners' associations out there.
So that, so the homeowners' association would be watching for plantings and how things are kept like they are in the other parks of Laurel Canyon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. McGrew?
This part of the Parkway is divided, and the part right in front of Pod Three is very narrow. Is there a chance that traffic would be diverted, such as it was when the pump station was installed? If there's a lengthy delivery?
We can always discuss that with the applicant. I know that that is a part of the divided with that quite large median right in through there. That's why I brought up about the construction vehicles, construction workers, that sort of thing. I have a tendency to think that as materials are delivered, they will go on-site, drop the materials, they have to make a right, probably go down to the golf course clubhouse to turn around in their parking lot to exit Laurel Canyon.
Mr. Carl?
Mr. Patton, I noticed on the criteria to be applied, the first, number one, it talked about there's a pod of attached homes within Soleil, are those also duplexes like this, and would they be consistent?
With the attached units, yes, they are behind the gate now, but they are the other side of the Laurel Canyon amenity center.
And are they, if I understood the gentleman correctly, these, their group does a lot of the buildings, so would this be consistent in style?
Builder is under contract to the owner developer of Soleil to build all of the residential structures within Soleil, and they're the ones that built those attached units and finished that pod out.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Patton. Move forward to our third and final public hearing for the evening. Public hearing for case MP eight two one zero four dash zero zero four, located at seventy Laurel Canyon Village Circle. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir. This is a master plan amendment in regards to the city of Canton-owned property in the commercial pod up next to the public shopping center. In discussions with city council moving forward relative to the housing needs assessment, council wanted to explore an amendment for the city-owned property to allow residential to be built there. There were discussions of council to look at alternative housing styles, you know, tiny home concepts, things of that nature. This is the first step with the master plan amendment to allow residential to move forward with those discussions that council had as we were finishing up with the housing needs assessment and talking about workforce housing, affordable housing. I'm here to answer questions at the end. Our office did not receive any phone calls or written comments in support or opposition.
Okay. At this point, we'll open the public hearing, and ask the applicant to step forward. You have ten minutes, I'll time you.
I can do my own timer. I submitted the application like you asked me to. No, just in short, this is a remnant property that the city acquired for a fire station site at Laurel Canyon. When we consolidated fire services with Cherokee County, it was determined that a better site was purchased by the county using some assistance and city funds a little bit further south on one forty where the new Station Nine was built, so there's no need to build a fire station on this site any longer. There's additional commercial property already out at Laurel Canyon that has not been developed, and the discussion, at least as part of the housing study, was that the site is basically surrounded by multifamily, so upon this acreage to do some type of innovative housing design might be an option for the city. We have not put forward a conditional use permit, because we don't know what that design would be, if it would be attached, if it would be a required conditional use permit for residential. This just allows us to start the planning process and look for partners to help us in identifying what might be there. And I'll reserve my eight minutes and forty-three seconds.
No one's signed up to speak in oppositions, we will close the public hearing and open this up for council discussion and questions. Again, this is the first step, as we discussed at our retreat and several other times, the opportunity to take this, two acres, I believe, or two, two, maybe more?
It's approximately two acres, I don't recall the exact acreage amount, one point nine acres.
Okay. And, you know, explore doing some innovative, you know, micro cottages, tiny homes, or something, you know, different as a test, and maybe developing something there that could be replicable, you know, on other smaller lots throughout the city, so it's very exciting and hopefully would be very innovative, so it's a good first step, and so we're excited about it, but. Other questions? Ms. McGrew?
At this time, do we need to specify types of residential? Do we need to specify attached, detached?
I wouldn't believe so. I guess the next step would be discussed, are we seeking proposals or RFQs to developers to, I mean, we would give a list of?
So, really, the difference is, by having residential as the zoning on this, anything we decide to do with the property, we're going to have to do publicly through a contract anyway, so there's going to be discussion. If we decide that the use is going to include more than two attached If we decide that the use is going to include more than two attached units, then we would have to go through a conditional use permit process at that point. Since we don't know what we're doing, we'd probably want to sit down and decide, do we want to do an RFQ and find, you know, a developer to pitch the lot? Or do we want to seek out an RFQ to find a developer to partner with on the city side in designing the lot? Or at some point, does the city want to use an authority to dispose of the lot with a residential builder that would then be in charge of bringing the plans back to council at that point? So in short, the answer is no.
I mean, I think we have had, you know, a few developers approach us, you know, wanting to do something like this in the city with some innovative ideas for smaller homes, tiny homes, micro cottages, you know, the concepts. And so we could possibly look at those and, or do an RFQ, but I'd love to see what other people's ideas are and then maybe whatever process we use or if there's a competition or something to do, hopefully set up an innovative model that not only we can use other areas, but other cities could follow as well. So. Yeah? Mr. Till?
Mr. Patton, I guess we are where we are right now. It's very early in the process and I guess for the public's sake, would you mind just kind of walking us through what you foresee this process being kind of from start to finish as much as you have kind of wrapped your mind around it? And I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but what do you see as a?
Ultimately, you know, it's going to be a city council decision, but one of the things that I think would be intriguing for the council to consider is some type of a request for qualifications or some type of a design competition and solicit input from builders, developers on what their thoughts are for the best use of the 1.9 acres would be with an emphasis on innovative housing. This master plan amendment is not changing the existing current use, if you will, of commercial or institutional use. We are just adding that this property can be developed for residential purposes. There are a number of communities that I have done some research on that have done some quasi-design competitions relative to innovative housing and that could be something for council to consider or at least doing a request for qualifications for design build.
And then as a follow-up, can we just go ahead and agree as a council that we do want to engage in a, in some sort of, as you call it, a design competition? I think it'd be fun. I think it'd be, it would really showcase some innovation that, that local developers might be able to bring to us that maybe we don't have awareness of right now.
Well, like I said, I think that would be something a little bit unique for the city of Canton. I'm aware, and I hate to say from the left coast, but Los Angeles County, California currently has design competitions ongoing for vacant lots and parcels scattered throughout the city and county in regards to design competitions for these smaller spaces. And there are some innovative approaches that are being looked at by quite a few design firms.
Yeah, I would love to explore that direction, too. There are, and there are organizations, I mean, Living Futures Institute and other organizations that have done similar things. And, I mean, I'd love to see what someone could do on 1.9 acres and maximize housing and, and whatever, and, you know, green initiatives as well. There are a lot of new concepts in 3D printed homes and all. So, you know, I'd love to do something as innovative as possible, so lead the way. But maybe we can ask Mr. Patton to maybe check into some of his, you know, favorite ideas and we could, you know, take a look at some of those. Mr. Carroll?
I know we're just here for the public hearing portion, but would it make sense to put that on the agenda for us to flesh out in our next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting, I guess we'd be discussing and voting on this, I mean, at the next meeting, so.
Could have additional discussion on the next step in the process at the July work session. That would give staff a little more time to pull together some things relative to some of these design competitions that we're aware of and provide that information to the council members as well as reach out to some of the local metro Atlanta design firms, gauge interest in, you know, doing something with this property jointly with the city.
Great. I think there's also some organizations, like companies that might be interested in partnering as well with this Home Depot, Georgia Power, some things like that. But, yeah, but thank you. I'm not hearing any opposition since well originated with us, so I think we can safely start looking into that. So, thank you, Mr. Patton.
I'd like to see us also include a landscaping competition with sustainability and all native plant material.
Sounds great. Awesome. So we will move into our, the business portion of our meeting. So with consideration to approve the minutes, you have in your packet special called council meeting draft minutes from May 20th and the council meeting draft minutes from May 20th as well. Have any changes, additions, revisions to those or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. All members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Members voted for the motion. Informational items. Again, these, this is our new zoning process. These are informational items on cases that would be coming up, so there's really no discussion on these. And so, Mr. Peppers, Mr. Patton, who's presenting these or?
What you have is informational, there is an annexation zoning and master plan that will be coming for public hearing in July before city council. This is the Old Os Road project that came before city council previously that was withdrawn to continue discussions with Cherokee County in regards to improvements from the project along Old Os up to G dot roadway improvements coming highway. The other upcoming public hearing also scheduled for July is an annexation, a zoning and text amendment for 1.75 acres of land, Knox Bridge Highway next to the racetrack. The text amendment would allow for a brewery, maximum 10,000 gallon of production capacity to be permitted use within general commercial. The zoning is for general commercial. This property currently is unincorporated Cherokee County and the applicant will present the case relative to allowing a micro brewery on this 1.75 acres.
Okay. So those will be coming to us in July, so we have a heads up on those two cases coming, so. Item C, employee recognitions. Chief Mayor Phil, welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I have two. The first one, Officer Corddry, who could not be here tonight because he's actually involved in a youth group in his own community tonight, which just goes to show his mindset on and off duty, and we all know Officer Corddry. But I am wanting to recognize him because he just hit his 10-year mark with the City of Canton Police Department. And, you know, in today's time, you don't see people stay around 10, 20 years anymore. But it's, it's great to have him, everyone here. It's, it's nice to talk about someone that everybody in this room knows and has dealt with and knows how he goes about his, his business. And so I do have a plaque for him and I will be giving that to him tomorrow, but I just wanted to recognize him for hitting his 10-year mark and all that he has done with the City of Canton Police Department.
Great.
The second recognition is for Officer Michael Kaplan, if you could come up here, please. And, and I have to say that I warned Officer Kaplan, I had seen the agenda, and I said, Officer Kaplan, it could be a while before you get up tonight. And he's, he's off duty, it's his off night. And I said, I would perfectly understand if you did not want to come, but I would like to recognize you. And he said, oh, I will be there. And he brought his lovely wife, Lacy also, who is a, a school teacher in Cherokee County, also a servant to our community. So a couple of years ago, I happened to be in our mailroom and I saw a FedEx envelope, which piqued my interest because like most places, usually a FedEx envelope is not a good thing that has been mailed to you. So I opened it up and it was an application. It was Officer Kaplan's. And I have not, before that, seen anyone FedEx us an application. I've not seen it afterwards. So I was interested. We had just closed books, so to speak, on the next academy. It was starting in four weeks and we already had a couple of people, we had done backgrounds, we were sending. And it takes about six, eight weeks, depending on where people live, at their local or whatever, to do a background. I read the application and was very impressed with it. One, it was typed and it was neat, which believe it or not is a rarity. And, and then what was in the application was just very impressive. So I called one of our background investigators and I said, I know you've got four weeks. Tell me, if you can't do it, tell me, but can you work this, this applicant and do you think we can get him in this next academy? I don't know why, never met the person, I could be completely wrong, but I have a really good feeling about this applicant. And they, they worked it and they worked day and night and they worked weekends and we were able to get Officer Kaplan in the academy. And I told Officer Kaplan this story the day that I hired him, had, that I was honored to hire him. And in that story, I told him, now don't make me regret doing that. Don't make me look back on this. And not only has he met my expectations, but he has exceeded my expectations. Officer Kaplan was nominated for Officer of the Quarter for the first quarter of 2021. He was nominated by his lieutenant and it was unanimous from everybody once he was nominated. And as you can see from here, Officer Kaplan brings a, a smile and a positive attitude that radiates throughout the entire police department. And he works night shift, so it, it's not always easy to be upbeat when you work night shift because of the hours and unfortunately some of the, the calls that you get during that shift. But he always comes in and brings that attitude. And when you have an officer that walks in the squad room and brings that attitude, it picks up the entire squad, the entire shift. And, and he has, he has done a great job for us. As I said, it was nominated, it was unanimous that we would do him. I would also say that he, we've just participated in our physical fitness test. See the smile? He's number one, number one on the run. And so I, I got to see the back of Officer Kaplan for a mile while I was trying to catch up to him, but I was, I was never really close to him. But, but again, that's just the attitude, the effort that he brings. I couldn't see the front of him because I was behind, I'm sure he was smiling the entire run. But anyway, I want to recognize him with Officer of the Quarter for our first quarter and thank Officer Kaplan and, and his wife for being here tonight and for everything that he, he does for the city of Canton.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations again, Officer Kaplan and Officer Cordry. We all appreciate you and our great officers begin with great leaders, Chief, so keep up the great work. Appreciate you. Any other announcements? We had no one sign up for our public input. No old business, so we'll move into new business and we had the addition of item A, discussion of the enterprise zone at the mill on Etowah. Or should I call it the mill in Cherokee now? So. So who's presenting this or discussing? Mr. Hodge, you want to do that?
Mayor and Council, good to see you guys. You know, it's been like over three years now. We, we closed in the middle of Etowah in February of 18. And, you know, I don't know if you all remember the story, you know, Grant's family owned the mill and they were, you know, talking about selling it to one of their tenants and that didn't work out. And so we looked at it and, you know, it was full. You could buy it at like a 10 cap rate, which, you know, it's kind of like a 10% return on what we could buy it for. So it was a, it was a fully operating kind of income producing asset. So, you know, I thought that was pretty good, but, you know, we thought it was very, but after we kind of studied it and wrapped our brains around it, we really realized that, you know, it deserved a lot more than that. And so when we decided to make it a mixed use project, you know, one thing we wanted to do is make sure that it was community based, you know, that it was experiential, but it kind of honored the, the history of the mill, but also the city. And I don't know how good of a job we've done with that, but we certainly have tried very, very hard to accomplish that. I can just tell you, mixed use projects are very difficult to pull off, especially out, this far out from big metropolitan areas. I know that everybody we bring up to see it that we respect, they're kind of amazed because it is different. It's just such a different, unique animal that doesn't exist anywhere else in the southeast. So I think we, we kind of pat ourselves on the back on doing something that I think that are very, that we haven't seen anybody else do anywhere. So, and a lot of that's the fact that we are in a great market that's emerging. So I hope we have been good partners with the city. You know, we originally got into it, mixed uses are very hard to do. We certainly have not built the mill to a 10 cap, something less than that. But we were always told that we would have incentives, you know, so, you know, when it was either questions, we were going to get a big abatement or we're going to the enterprise zones, we like to go the enterprise zone. So we kind of, we kind of went that direction and we signed an agreement with you guys, I think about a year ago, kind of spells it all out. We could kind of pick which year, 2020 or 2021. I think we chose to go with 2021. So I, I don't really know what's up for discussion now. I think it has to deal with kind of abatement of permits for 2021. It's not a huge issue in terms of the numbers, but, you know, I just wanted to tell you what a great partnership we think we've had with the city. You know, we hope to continue that partnership, you know, kind of look at it. We're, you know, we're over 90% pre-leased in terms of kind of retail and office component, so we're kind of wrapping up, you know, we're kind of really on a, kind of closing things down. I think by the end of the year, we'll kind of see that. But, you know, once again, appreciate you all's support, support in the past, but support in the future as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Thank you.
So appreciate your investment in the city and we're very proud of the mill on Etowah and look forward to the future. So, do we discuss anything on that or let me?
What we will do between now and the, and the next meeting is we'll put together a memo that outlines what has been paid this year and the fees that are being asked to be abated or refunded to this point and abated for the second half of the year to kind of give you an estimate of what that dollar figure is. And we'll, we'll bring that to you in the form of a memo for your next meeting for you to consider as part of an approval process.
Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on, discussion of proposed fiscal year end 2020 budget amendments. Ms. Forster?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a formal process that we have to complete each year in conjunction with the closing of our books and the audit. So these budget amendments go along with the presentation that Clay Pilgrim presented this evening, fiscal year 2020. And if you look down the center So we're asking that you review these changes, ask any questions if you have them, and then approve them at the next meeting.
Any questions for Ms. Forrester this evening? Also just noticed I forgot to go over the item for the review of April financials, which are in your packets, while she's up here if anyone asks any questions for Ms. Forrester. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next time is Discussion of Proposed Enterprise Lease Agreements. Mr. Ingram.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you an agreement between the City of Canton and Enterprise Fleet Management. I brought this to your attention a number of times in the past, that the city was interested in, in entering into a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to lease our fleet vehicles. Mr. Michael Larkins and Mr. Mark Torrey are here this evening. If you have any questions regarding the specifics of that lease, I do want to point out that the mayor has, has the three, the three agreements. Right now, that lease agreement has a requirement of a $500 deductible. Mr. Larkins and Mr. Torrey have mentioned to me that they will be providing an amendment to that because the city does not have a $500 deductible, our issue is $5,000. So, there will be amendment to that, that's added to that by the next meeting. But we will be asking for your consideration to approve that agreement at the 17th meeting, the voting session, and for your approval to have the mayor sign that. In the, I'll go ahead and say in the upcoming budget, the fiscal year 22 budget, we are proposing to enter into that agreement and probably engage in about 20 leased vehicles next year and complete that program probably in about three years, at which time we will have our whole fleet management, fleet, fleet with Enterprise Fleet Management. So do you have any questions for me or the gentleman from Enterprise?
Question, Ms. Ingram?
This isn't specifically about the agreement, but would any of the vehicles in the fleet be hybrids or electric?
Yes, yes, there will be. As a matter of fact, we were talking just before the, the meeting tonight, he's already provided, they've already provided some price, some pricing for some Toyota hybrids and a few other plug-in hybrids, but we're also going to paint some pricing for true 100% electric plug-ins.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Just confirm the only change, Mr. Ingram, is the deductibles changed from 500 to 5,000 from the agreements that are in the packet.
That's correct, and that's going to be a via, an addendum.
Got you. Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you.
Next, Discussion of Ethics Ordinance, Mr. Dyer. Yes, Mr. Dyer, the C manager, to work on a draft of this and present this work session, so thank you for meeting our deadline, so we appreciate that.
Yes.
Something we've been looking forward to getting done, so appreciate your work on it.
So we had done a lot of work on that a year ago, or whenever that was, two years ago, and so picking it back up turned out to be a shorter process than we had anticipated. So one, we had sort of stuck on was needing input from the city council as to what we should be in here, so we've decided, we just put it together. So, understanding that all of this can be changed if you don't like any part of it. What I thought I would do tonight is just highlight kind of what's changing from our existing ordinance and what weaknesses we were trying to address based on our experience and the things that we have talked about with regard to an ethics ordinance. So, the first thing is, or the biggest thing that we, our existing ordinance just describes the financial interest that you have to have to have a conflict of interest as a pecuniary interest, and it talks about remote and incidental, but doesn't define any of those terms. So this, this proposed ordinance actually puts some meat on those terms, it makes it very clear what we're talking about. So, this ordinance has a concept of a incidental interest, which is anything that's not a substantial interest. Substantial interest is defined as owning 5% of a business or $5,000 worth of the value. We've had discussions, Mr. Ingram raised the question of, is that 5,000 just too low? Does it start to wrap in publicly traded companies that you may own stock in? And, and frankly, we can, we can do away with the dollar amount, 5% probably captures what we're, we're talking about. We wouldn't necessarily know, and many people wouldn't know whether they have $5,000 worth of equity interest, so it is probably too low. We'd have to get into exceptions for publicly traded companies, probably easier just to eliminate that in terms of ownership. There's a second part, if you've earned $5,000 from them in the previous 12 months, we'd want to keep that. That number could be 10, it could be whatever you think is appropriate, but five was, was sort of put there as a place marker on that. One of the issues we had before was issues about whether a council member would have a conflict if his or her business was impacted, or property was impacted by a decision you were making, but it was a citywide ordinance change. So this defines that situation as a remote interest, and, and that is not going to be a problem for a council member. If it, it specifically describes that, if you, or you are impacted the same way everybody else is, then it, then it's not a conflict of interest. For the example's taxes, that obviously it benefits you if you cut taxes, but so, it benefits everybody. So that is not something you're prohibited from voting on, nor do you have to disclose that interest. So, that sort of was a big thing that we struggled with before because our, our existing ordinance just didn't define a lot of those things. Section 2467 is adding somewhat aspirational things, so this is sort of just, you should behave in your, in your conduct as a council member, but they are not grounds for an ethics complaint. They're, they're, because they're just political. I mean, that would just be pure malice to file an ethics complaint that you were mean to employees. So, those are aspirational for you, but I didn't want those to get wrapped up in ethics complaints because we saw that happening. We experienced that where the, they were getting really picky and, and it was more about just your behavior, not about, you know, did you have a real act improperly in terms of voting or decision-making? So 467 is just some generalized, hope you, hope you behave kind of things. 468 is, is a list of prohibited activities that would be the basis for an ethics complaint. They are mostly the same as we have already. It adds a couple of provisions about disclosure, so that even if you can vote, you have to disclose some, certain times, and this would make it an ethics violation for you not to disclose when you should. But that, but generally, the list is the same as, as was before. Now, one other difference was, our existing ordinance has a exception for a gift of insignificant value. I never knew what insignificant value meant, I would hate to have to figure that out. So the existing ordinance basically prohibits gifts, which I think is a better rule for you anyway, that you can just say, no, I'm not allowed to take, accept a gift. But that's, again, up to you to decide that. 469 deals with actual conflicts of interest and whether you can vote or not. This was the thing I was most troubled with, with our existing ordinance, is it wasn't clear what happened if you voted improperly. And so, it makes it clear that you cannot vote on something that you're, that involves a family member who has a business interest. Now, the city, there's another provision that says we can't even do a contract with council members individually. So we're not really worried about you voting on something that you're personally doing because we just can't do that. So this would be voting with, with, when a family member might have an interest, if it's a substantial interest, you have to recuse yourself, you can't vote, you also have to disclose it. There, there's other times where you disclose, but you're allowed to vote. We had, questions always come up with nonprofit board membership. This specifically says that is not, you have to disclose it, but you can vote if a family member's on a board of a nonprofit. For-profit's a whole different thing. That's a, that's an actual thing you can't vote on, is if they're aboard, a director and officer of a for-profit company. So this makes it clear, it adds two things to it. One, it adds some teeth to that in that any contract that is improperly voted on is voidable, meaning the city council can then get out of the contract. So it kind of puts a burden on the other party to make sure that that doesn't happen because they'd have a questionable contract. But it also, I, I wanted to add something that said, any violations or improper vote does not invalidate an ordinance, because that came up too. Once you've adopted an ordinance, if somebody shouldn't have voted, you can always revisit that and undo the ordinance, but I don't, I don't want it to be automatically invalid just because one council member's vote was done improperly. So that's in there. The biggest change, of course, in this is, is the Board, the Board of Ethics. So the proposal is, because you had mentioned in previous conversations, some of you liking having a pool of people that you then draw from, so it creates that process where each of you would nominate two people. They would serve for a two-year term, they have to be a resident for a year, there's some other qualifications, but they would only have to be, if their name was drawn and they heard a case, they're, they're off. They don't have to do more than one. They only have to serve on one. So what would happen is if there was a complaint and we got, and it got far enough where we were actually having to constitute a board, we would draw names randomly out of this pool of 14 people. The ordinance draft has the mayor and council doing that, and as I looked at that today, I thought, well, that's kind of unwieldy, who, who does that? And it probably ought to be the clerk or the city attorney actually doing the drawing because you may be the subject of that, so, or the mayor might be. And so, I think if we're going to just name an individual, the clerk or me, or the city manager should be the individual actually drawing the name. But it would be done in public at the, at a meeting, so that process is in here, I think that will work pretty well. One of the things that several cities that we looked at had the city council actually making the ultimate decision. So a lot of them just had this ethics board being a recommending body that would say, we found there to be a violation, and then it comes back to the city council to decide what to do about that. So the penalties and then, and the proposed ordinance are the same, censure and reprimand. I did put in there because I'd seen it, because I think people felt like that is just weak and, and sometimes you, I would hear comments of, well, what's the point? If that's all we can do about it. And so some cities had this request for resignation, which I wanted to put it in front of you to consider because that would, it sort of makes it even more serious sort of than a censure or reprimand. It makes more sense for that if it's coming back to the city council to do that, to vote, to request for resignation rather than an ethics board doing that. So, just wanted to sort of put it out there for you to think about, whether you, whether you wanted to have a role in that or thought that was more appropriate for city council to make some of these calls about what's going to happen. Again, you're leaving it to somebody else to decide whether the violation occurred, and so it would come to you, because these things ultimately are just often political, meaning there is no real punishment and it, and it's about showing that somebody had an ethical violation. So, don't have to decide any of that, but I wanted to sort of present that to you as a, if we're going to leave with the ethics board, I would probably want to take out the request for resignation as a penalty because I think that's sort of awkward for an ethics board to, to make that. So it would just be censor or reprimand would be the only two penalties for that. We, we really are proposing to change the process because our process was very vague before the complaint was going to the mayor. The mayor didn't want to touch them, city clerk ended up doing them. So, the, the process now has the complaint being filed and it, and it has to be filed within six months essentially of you knowing about it. So you can't sit on it and raise it later. It's ultimately a one-year thing, so if you take an action, after a year, you're golden on that, meaning nobody can come, even if it was a violation, if nobody bothered to come raise it. So there's, when you read it, you'll see a six-month and a year, but that's how that would really work. It's effectively a six-month period that you have to file a complaint. It also prohibits complaints during election period, which I thought was a pretty good idea. I saw that in several cities, so that you're not getting complaints about essentially political complaints, trying to hurt a candidate. So from qualifying to election period, there can be no complaints against somebody who's running for office. But, you know, after election immediately, that you can, and it, and that six-month period is told during that time. So, somebody's not going to lose their ability to do that or not. It requires an affidavit, so you have to swear to it. The draft proposes that you have to be a resident to file one. That came up in discussions, I think everybody kind of thought that was a good idea. And the way it would work is the question people have raised, well, what if, if somebody doing business with the city that doesn't live here? They'd have to find a resident to do it, and the resident can attach affidavits from other people or documents from other people. So it's not like you're going to get away with it just because it's not a resident. But they're going to have to find a resident who cares enough to file the, file the complaint. So the board would then meet initially just to determine basically a probable cause. They would take the complaint in any response that the accused can, can, wants to file and, and they have a time to file that. So the first meeting would just be looking at these writings and deciding, does it even allege something that would be a violation? Because a lot of people allege things and it's really not about the ethics ordinance. So, if they say no, then they just dismiss it out of hand. If they say yes, it does, then it goes on to a full hearing, at which time they could take evidence and, and hear things. So that's sort of a quick summary. One thing that did change also, there's always a question about whether employees are subject to the ethics ordinance, so what this draft proposes is that employees would be covered if they're appointed to a body who, who can vote. So if you appointed a staff member to be on a committee or, or the, or a body that made a decision, recommended things to the city council or actually made decisions, they would be subject to it. Otherwise, employees are not, because you cover that through the personnel manual, not, not through the ethics ordinance. So this would cover city officials, you, and anybody you appoint to a board. So the best example would be the DDA, they actually make decisions, and so they would be subject to the ethics ordinance as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
I guess the process would be to take a look at it and, I don't know if you want to vote on it next meeting or not, or sit on it for a little bit and think about it?
I think, I mean, I think it's a great, great, great start. I mean, I think we all had a common goal of it being as tight as it could be and as, as strong as it can be. Maybe we all review this and should we forward questions to you, Mr. Dyer, or compile those?
Just if you, you know, obviously, it's always hard if you get one person saying, I want to do this, but don't know whether to do it or not. But sure, I think if we just send them the city manager, and then he and I can talk about things and if we get enough comments about it, but, or we'll address them in another meeting and maybe that's the thing to do, is, is just have comments and questions. Next meeting, we'll talk about it again and not intend to vote next meeting, but we'll put it on to Ju- July.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love if we could get something in place by July, so, does that sound good to everyone, to bring your questions the next meetings?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Next time is Discussion of Intergovernmental Funding Agree, Intergovernmental Funding Agreement for the Cherokee Office of Economic Development. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, we, we have generally had a, an agreement with Cherokee County Office of Economic Development to do industrial recruitment and expansion projects on behalf of the city. They are created under authorities of the county, and so it is a county-wide service as it relates to SDS, so they get the base funding from the county. Historically though, the cities have provided some supplemental funding to them. This agreement provides them with $20,000 for that service of recruitment and expansion industrial. And then there's an additional $4,000 that we provide on an annual basis to offset the cost of Cherokee Zoom Prospector, which is a real estate site that they manage that basically lists all offices, industrial sites that can be used by site selection groups throughout the state, throughout the world, when looking for. when looking for locations. So property owners can work through their office to get their sites listed out there for those types of uses. In the past, what had happened is the county would come through and they would bring an agreement, and it would be the same agreement for every city. What we decided to do as part of the SDS process was that if individual cities wanted to have agreements with Cherokee Office of Economic Development, we would draft our own agreements. And so this is our agreement. It is similar to the agreement from Woodstock. We have made a couple of changes to it. But ultimately, this would be a three-year agreement for us to provide funding to them. Right now, we're funding that out of the rental car tax, but I do believe all of these would be ARPA-eligible funds moving forward. So it may be that we use that most restrictive fund category once we receive those dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the agreement.
Any questions? Thank you. And your report, Mr. Peppers?
I have one item under my report, and I provided a copy of an aerial map to you. We received a request earlier today. As you're aware, Cherokee County School District has purchased land in Riverstone adjacent to Teasley for the construction of a new high school site. You'll see in the middle of that map, there is a green block. There are two parcels which are an unincorporated island. For whatever reason, when Riverstone was being developed, those were owned by Brightsasser, so they were part of the sale of property to the school district. The school district says, hey, we'd like to annex them in. It'll make it a lot easier for us on permitting and is there things to the state and local level. I basically said to them, look, it's our goal to incorporate all of these random unincorporated islands anyways. So instead of you going through the petition process, paying an application fee, paying advertising fees, let me ask the council if they're okay with us doing a city-initiated annexation since it's government-owned land anyways, and we can start that process for them. The school district was fine with that. The only cost we'll have is the actual running of the ad. But I mean, ultimately, our goal is to close all these unincorporated islands. So these two will disappear if we, unless you have a problem with that. If you don't, we'll get an application filed on July 1st so we can start that process for them. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on anything.
Any questions?
How much money are we giving up in fees, the application fee?
On this, very little. I mean, it's insignificant. Really, the only cost we have, traditionally, when we do things with the school district, we don't charge application fees anyways. It's our tax dollars paying a portion of the project. So we have waived, we have waived fees for the school district before.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
We have one council introduced item, Ms. Bagru, discuss the August work session.
Yes, thank you. Every year, Georgia Municipal Association has an education week for elected officials. It's in June, but because of COVID, this year they've had to push it back and push it back. And it's scheduled for, to begin on August 6th now. The first class begins at 9:00 a.m. on August 6th. That's hard to say. But our council meeting is August 5th, 6 o'clock, and nobody ever knows when they're going to end. So it was, sometimes they're a half hour, sometimes they're four hours. So it was my thought that since probably all of us, maybe not all of us, are going down to Savannah for these educational opportunities and the first class Friday is at 9:00 a.m., if someone wanted to drive after the council meeting, that would be pretty dangerous. And if someone were to want to drive down Friday morning, they'd have to leave here about 3:30 to get there for the nine o'clock class. So it is my ask for the council to discuss, what do you think about moving the August work session to August 5th? According to Mr. Peppers, and feel free to chime in, we need to decide this tonight because of applications for public hearings. I don't think it's a big problem for the general public who likes to attend the meetings to come on a Wednesday rather than the following Thursday. So I would like for council to discuss this opportunity. Not everybody at once, of course.
What was the date again you're suggesting we move it to?
Our regular meeting is August 5th. I'm suggesting that we move the meeting to Wednesday, August 4th.
Okay.
And classes start at 9:00 a.m. on the 6th.
I certainly understand the concern and I don't have an issue with it necessarily. I know we voted the first of the year for the, for the meeting dates for the entire year so those could be published and everything. And I know now that we handle public hearings, you know, those are scheduled. And I know one reason why we'd have to decide to not is so that, you know, advertisements could be done and, you know, everyone could be informed that, you know, it's going to be on a different night. And, you know, citizens, I do think citizens expect them on Thursday nights, but, you know, and we don't typically have a lot of citizens that come. But my only, my only concern would be, you know, of someone that may want to participate in one of those hearings or they do show up for a council meeting and, you know, we're not here on that night when we're regularly scheduled. I understand the concern, but that's just my concern on the other side, you know. But, you know, the education opportunity is certainly a good one and certainly I care for the well-being of our council members and safety. But again, it's up to you guys and I'm.
If nobody's interested, you know, I just thought I'd throw it out there for conversation. It's fine with me.
No, I would support it for sure.
I don't have a problem with it. My driver would not want to go after council or at 3:30 in the morning.
I think we can do, I mean, social media blasts. And I think it's, I think we can make it pretty clear for anybody who's interested that the meeting date has changed for citizens who want to come.
Yeah, really, the only issue we had was in planning the block ads and making sure that the applicants who turned in an application on June 1st for the August public hearing know that it's going to be on the 4th instead of the 5th.
We know who those applicants are because they already advertised and.
That's, that's correct. We've already received applications on June 1st, so.
And not only that, you know, we just changed the process and we'll be changing this, but it's, again, with proper communication, you know, we can address that, so.
I make the motion that we change the August work session from the 5th to the 4th.
Same time at 6:00 p.m. A motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Members voted for the motion. Thank you. Mayor's report, I just have one item. Recently, staff and mayor's office have been getting a lot of requests for proclamations and usually for, you know, very, very good reasons. And there's just a lot of requests and, you know, some for national issues, federal issues, local issues, you know, just not really rhyme or reason for them. And I would just like to ask the city attorney to maybe look at some, what some other cities are doing and see if they have processes or ordinances on. I think some, I think I saw some other local cities actually had kind of ordinances for proclamations. And if you could just kind of look and see what other cities are doing locally and bring us back something to consider maybe the July work session? Something simple, just so we could just discuss that as a group, so. All on the same page there, so, thank you. And with that, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss personnel and litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel litigation.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Members voted to adjourn. Adjourn.